Inaletasotran Guahan is called to order. Can we please rise and I'm calling upon Senator Uggan if he can lead us in prayer and also inclusive of the 9/11 victims?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. If I can ask everyone to please bow our heads for a moment of silence first. A prayer for the anniversary of September 11th. Eternal God, Source and Creator of life, from the depths we have called to you and we call to you again for courage, strength and wisdom on this anniversary of our nation's tragedy, tragedy. Grant us courage to confront our enemies, comfort those who stand alone with our spouse, parent, brother, sister or friend. Open our hearts to them and to the children orphaned 10 years ago or 15 years ago today. Enable us to love more deeply all children who suffer, accept with mercy our prayers of healing on behalf of the families of the victims and on behalf of the second responders who became ill at ground zero. Despite the horror and tragedy of 9/11, our country and our island remains a shelter of peace, a symbol of freedom, a beacon of light, of compassion and justice to the downtrodden and oppressed of the world. Strengthen the hands of our people to defend this country and our common values of freedom and justice. Inspire our leaders and diplomats to act wisely and to pursue peace in our island and everywhere in the world. May we teach our children to learn and to think, to consider and to reason, to be courageous in thought and in deed, and to nurture hearts of wisdom that they may do battle against fear, hatred and bigotry using weapons of the spirit and loving hearts. We offer our prayers on behalf of our island and our country and our government, our president, our governor, our judiciary, our government officials, members of Illicitudren Guahan, our soldiers and citizens, upon all who faithfully toil for the good of our country, to preserve democracy in our land, to advocate for civility between adversaries and to treat every human being as infinitely worthy and dignified by virtue of being created by the divine image. Bestow upon us all the blessings of peace and may we live to see the day when swords will be converted into plowshares and nations will not learn war anymore. We ask this in your holy name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of Inifresi, can Senator Torres lead us?
Inifresi.
For the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro, I'm going to ask Senator Underwood and for the singing of the national anthem, Senator Frank Blas can lead us. Thank you very much, Senators. And the clerk please take your call.
Senator Tom Adda, Senator Tony Adda, Senator Uggan, Senator Blas, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Espada, Senator McCready, Senator Morrison, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Rispisho, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Sinicalis, Senator Torres, Senator Underwood, Speaker Wanta. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispisho, on an approval of the Legislative Journal?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First I move to excuse those members not yet present for session.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And I move for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated August 17, 2016, as well as September 2, 2016, both subject to correction.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
There are communications and petitions and I move that they be appended to a session journal. There are also messages from Illicitudren Guahan and I move for the same. There are reports of standing committees, Madam Speaker, and I move that they be appended to a session journal. There being no reports of select committees on item 12. I move that in one motion, Bill Number 368-33LS, Bill Numbers 369-33COR and 370-33COR, Resolution Numbers 441-33LS, 2445-33LS, Resolution Numbers 446-33COR, 2452-33COR, Certificate Numbers 180-33LS and 181-33LS, Certificate Numbers 182-33COR and 183-33COR, all be given its first reading.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion, and it's certainly something that we have to dispose of as a body, our legal counsel, Therese Terlaye, submitted an amendment to the contract, being that she is a senatorial candidate, that left us with the decision of who we need to select to replace her. At this time, I move that we recognize the Assistant Counsel, Attorney Julian Uggan, and I move that he be selected by this body to be the Legislative Counsel. And I've spoken to our colleagues, most of them prior to, what's that? For the, of course, for the balance of this legislative term, we can't make any decisions for a future legislature, but just for that clarification, that the motion is that we select Attorney Julian Uggan to be our Legislative Counsel.
Thank you very much, Senator, for speaking with all of the colleagues, so I put it before you, so I don't hear any objections, no objections, and so ordered.
Thank you. So I know I didn't need to say anything more than all of his, what he's able to present for himself in his legal work. At this time, Madam Speaker, it'd be appropriate for you to swear him in as an attache of the legislature.
Okay, so can we all, yeah, give attention to who we're swearing in? So Attorney Julian Uggan, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Julian Uggan, solemnly swear, in the presence of Almighty God, that I will well and faithfully support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the United States applicable to Guam, and the laws of Guam, and that I will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties as legal attache of the Illetasotran Guahan.
Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker, and congratulations again to our new Legislative Counsel. Madam Speaker, I move that we take leave of the body to recognize our most recent Legal Counsel, Legislative Counsel Therese Terlaye, say that we owe a debt of gratitude to her and her legal work, and so I can ask the members to keep, please, she's probably watching, maybe if she's not, someone will certainly know that this legislature recognizes her legal work over the last several terms, not just for this term, and I ask that we recognize that by giving Therese Terlaye a big round of applause also.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted, and that the sponsors work with the clerk and the legal counsel to allow for the technical corrections and that all senators be added as co-sponsors.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have this request from Senator Tom Adda to place Bill 322-33COR as amended by the sponsors, an act to rezone lots 2260 and 2261, the municipality of Baragata, from agricultural A-zone to S-1-zone, on the second reading file of this session agenda.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
And also from the Committee on Transportation, on Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement, on the nomination of Maria Titino to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors, with the recommendation to do, confirm I move that this be placed in the legislative concurrence file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, we were noticed that there would be some override attempts, but movers of these overrides will begin with these overrides tomorrow, because as you committed publicly that the Bill Number 326-33, sponsored by, introduced by Senator Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to add a new 11301.1, repeal subsections B and C of 11306 and other parts of the statutes relative to the statute of limitations in cases involving child sex abuse, you committed and this body through the Rules Committee committed that it'd be on the top of the session agenda, so just so the body know that we will go back to motions after this bill has been debated on and discussed on the floor.
But before we do, can we do the legislative concurrences?
Yeah, of course, yeah. That's why I'm not, I don't have any other motions, but I want to give the movers of these overrides an opportunity, so we will go back to motion, so everybody's aware.
Thank you, Senator. On legislative concurrence?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. From the Committee on U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety and Judiciary, on the nomination of Alberto Ela Moreno V. to serve as Director of Department of Corrections, with Senator Frank Uggan Jr.'s committee to, recommendation to confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
And then that one nomination that we made, from Senator Tom Adda's committee, on the nomination of Maria Titino to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors, with the recommendation to do confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. We are in the second reading file. Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized on Bill 326-33COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill Number 326-33COR as substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety and Judiciary, into the third reading file, but I'd also like an opportunity to speak to it.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, Madam Speaker, I want to begin by thanking the Committee Chairman, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., for all of his efforts in assuring Bill 326-33 through the committee process and getting it here today. I also want to thank the various groups and their efforts in pursuing this legislation, their sheer drive and determination to protect the victims of child sex abuse is simply heroic. As most of you know, this bill completely removes the statute of limitation in cases involving sexual abuse against children. In light of growing awareness of the issue of child sexual abuse, many states have begun to reform both their criminal and civil statutes to give victims increased access to the legal system. We are hoping to do the same here on Guam, as many victims of child sexual abuse have not been able to proceed with civil claims against the perpetrators because those claims have been barred by the time limit. We know that time restrictions have been a particularly pressing problem in light of the delicate nature of child sex crimes. Victims often need many years to overcome the pain of their abuse and time to obtain the courage needed to speak out about the abuse that they have suffered. As the national trend moves towards loosening past restrictions and statutes of limitations, we are doing the same here in Bill 326. Meanwhile, this substituted version also includes language that holds responsible anyone who enables abusers, as well as any institution acting in concert with them. So what is the magnitude of this problem? Child sexual abuse is far more prevalent than most people realize and is likely the most prevalent health problem children face with the most serious array of consequences. According to the Darkness to Light Organization, about 1 in 10 children will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday. About 1 in 7 girls and 1 in 25 boys will be sexually abused before they turn 18. This year, there will be about 400,000 babies born in the United States that will become victims of child sexual abuse unless we do something to stop it. Only about 38% of child sexual, of child victims disclose the fact that they have been sexually abused and some never disclose. On Guam, from 2010 to 2015, there were 2,366 cases of child sexual abuse reported to the Guam Child Protective Services. Now let's let that number sink in for a little bit. 2,366 of Guam's children were sexually abused, and that's only the number of cases that were actually reported. We can do something through Bill 326, that serves as the deterrent to anyone considering committing this horrible act against children. Meanwhile, it also assists victims who have the bravery to speak out and share their stories. Madam Speaker, the victims of these horrific crimes courageously came forward and testified in the public hearings in favor of Bill 326. Their stories of abuse and survival brought most of us to tears. Their courage, though, was so inspiring. Today, I ask all of my colleagues to please vote in favor of protecting the children of our island. We can't allow their voices to be silenced anymore. And Madam Speaker, you and I were both informed this morning of another instance, of another report of abuse, something that was, continues to be horrific and unfathomable, that it has occurred. It's got to stop. But more importantly, is we can't give these perpetrators of these crimes the luxury, for lack of a better term, of hiding because they, they think that nothing can happen to them anymore. Children, these individuals that have, that came out, they don't have to live this way and they shouldn't. They shouldn't have to live in fear or live in shame or live knowing that they couldn't, they can't do anything. I'd like for them to go on knowing that they can do something and that something will be done. And what Bill 326-33 would do was give them, give these individuals, these victims of child sexual abuse, that opportunity, that right, that path to justice that they so very much deserve. Nobody should go on living in shame, nobody should go on living in fear, nobody should go on living in the dark. We all know that children are impressionable and many of them won't come out with what happened to them early on because they've been impressed that if they, if they speak, something could happen to them. In their later years, when they find that that is not in fact true, when that is not right, let's not have the legal system bar them from bringing, from seeking justice. And not just against the abuser, but against all those individuals who may have known something about it, who helped to hide it. This can't be hidden anymore. This community can't be silent anymore. Let's give these victims the right and the voice to speak. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'm going to like to now give my colleagues the opportunity to speak on maybe some of the concerns or some of the things they have with regards to the bill. I just hope that at the end of the day, that this measure gets unanimous support so that we can help our victims gain the peace of mind that they truly deserve. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Frank Uggan Jr. I'm taking your names down as I'm seeing you raise them. Okay. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and fellow colleagues. As Speaker, I'd like to stand in support of Bill Number 326-33COR as substituted by the committee, and I want to first of all start off by commending the sponsor for introducing this particular legislation and understanding the impact that it will have on our community. You know, it's never easy to have to endure what the committee underwent over the course of the last several months. And I say committee from a distance, only because we were members of the legislature entertaining this particular proposal. Well, Madam Speaker, the good sponsor of the legislation was very, very helpful in formulating the final version of this, and there were also members and comments provided by members of our community that contributed towards the evolution of this legislation, and I want to thank all of them. But most of all, as the Chair of this committee overseeing this process prior to reporting it out, Madam Speaker, perhaps it's best that I not, kind of interesting, Madam Speaker, a combination of yesterday's event and then discussion on this legislation, but I'll say this much, the individuals who stepped forward during the course of the several public hearings that the committee conducted, I want to stand here and extend support for this legislation, primarily because of those individuals and others that could have been affected by similar actions in the past. To hear, to read some of the testimonies that were provided, Madam Speaker, and these individuals, these victims, and I say with capital letters, innocent victims, when the incident occurred, Madam Speaker, they were taken advantage of. And to listen to the stories and to understand that they want to have the opportunity to face the perpetrators by virtue of the provision contained in here, certainly spoke volumes during the course of the public hearing. And it's difficult because, as Speaker, all of these memories about what happened during the course of those public hearings and the statements that were made, it's not easy for these victims to come out. I know, I do recall very distinctly that when an initial, one of the first victims came out publicly, one of the statements that I heard from members in the community was, "Well, why did it take so long for this individual to come out?" You know, Madam Speaker, if you speak to professionals, and I appreciate some of the expertise and the professionals out there who came forward and provided testimony that in circumstances like this, it's difficult for these victims to come out immediately. Sometimes it takes 30 years, sometimes it takes 40 years. Why? We're not going to answer that. I really don't have that answer. But the professionals have stated that situations like these, in most cases, people leave this world without sharing it. But to date, we've had four individuals, five individuals that stepped forward and their family members to share their personal experiences, to share how they were victimized by adults, Madam Speaker, or by an adult while they were growing up, anywhere from the age of 10 to 15 to 16 years old. These individuals were victimized, and you and I know that at the level of maturity, these individuals can still be influenced, and it is to no fault of theirs that they found themselves in that particular situation. It's the fault of the perpetrator. Based on testimony, the adults. So, Madam Speaker, I was gonna mention a few other things, but I really appreciate what the sponsor of this legislation, legislation has done, has brought this issue to light, allowed several of our members of our community to share their story. And to me, that already validates the need for this legislation. Just by virtue of these individuals stepping forward and sharing their story with the community and saying, "We want to be made whole. We want to heal as a result of this process." And that's what this legislation would do. I stand in support of those victims, and I stand in support of this particular legislation, Madam Speaker, and I, I really thank the sponsor for continuing to work very closely with the committee until it was reported out. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and encourage our colleagues to support it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know what? A lot has been shared by our courageous, courageous victims during the public hearing for Bill three-twenty-six-thirty-three. And I had repeatedly thanked them, and I had repeatedly thanked the author for this bill, not just because it is going to be a deterrent, but it is a message of accountability for those who cannot help themselves, for those who choose to abuse our children. Madam Speaker, this bill has actually served to educate our community. It has made headlines. This is a topic that many people want to just avoid because it's a very painful topic. I can almost assure you that in this body, we know of at least one victim, maybe it's within our family members, maybe they're our friends, but you and I, as educators, we have seen how our children in our school system, how they have suffered when they have been subjected to child abuse, sexual abuse. And so, Madam Speaker, there really isn't enough that I could say right now to thank the author of this bill, but more importantly, to thank our community for standing behind those who were courageous enough to share what had happened to them and, and what they have had to endure for decades. So, Madam Speaker, I encourage this body to unanimously support Bill three-twenty-six-thirty-three, not just because it will be a deterrent, but it will speak about the need for us to hold people accountable and to educate our community, to educate our children about the need for them to stand up and to tell somebody when they are being sexually abused. I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this bill.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I wish to proffer an amendment to the bill, and I'm wondering if the clerk would be so kind to distribute copies of the amendment? Or I have a hard copy, if, if I may ask, that it be...
I'm gonna take a brief recess and make sure we get copies out to everyone. The legislature's back in session. Everyone should have a copy. Senator, you may, I continue.
Sidhuas Mas, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill, and so much so that I've taken a lot of time and, and worked with the sponsor and other colleagues to determine ways that we can strengthen the bill and make some minor tweaks that ensure that the, the statute, that, to ensure that the intent of this legislation will hold up in the court systems. I think that, you know, some of us wear our sleeves and our heart, our heart on our sleeves more effectively than others, and, and I know that that day that we had the public hearing was one of the most difficult, difficult public hearings to, to sit through because it was just such raw emotion, and it, it tested our resolve to ensure that we do things and effect policy that is, ensures that there's some level of decency in our community and wherein decency is perpetrated on our, our most defense, the victims, that there is recourse, and there is recourse through the criminal justice system, but that there is also recourse through the, the civil system. And what I'm proposing is an amendment to page two, lines twenty-three to twenty-five of the bill, so that in sub-paragraph A, I wanted to add person and legal entity because these two terms are commonly used as legal terms, whereas enabler, the word enabler is not. And again, it's just to ensure that the intent of the legislation will hold up in the court systems. So the first amendment on sub-paragraph A is, should read, "Any claim of action arising from an incident of child sexual abuse may be commenced against a person, a legal entity, abusers, their enablers, their aiders or abetors, those acting in concert with them, and their, and their institutions at any time." And if there are no questions, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proceed to the second amendment.
Senators, on the first amendment, we're going to bifurcate this so that we can do them one at a time. For subsection A, on lines twenty-three, on the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment?
Senator Torres, you still have the floor?
Seduce Mossi, Madam Speaker. How fortunate for me to have our brand-new legal counsel on board because he's certainly being put to the test right away with our first bill. And I want to thank Attorney Uggan for going through the issues and reconciling what my concerns were specific to Section 11404, which is the existing cause of action not affected. Madam Speaker, what I'd like to do is I would like to withdraw my prior proposal and instead submit an amendment.
One moment. On the motion then to withdraw, which is the First Amendment.
Just subsection B.
The first. I mean, you're right. B, I'm sorry, because A already passed. But it's subsection B now that her motion is to withdraw. I believe everyone has a copy.
I want to confirm that everyone has a copy. So, Madam Speaker, my amendment is on page three, lines one to five of the bill.
You may proceed.
Which is subsection B. What I did essentially here is I took out the word victim.
One moment, Senator. I just heard from the clerk that they think they've disseminated the, another version, so we're going to take another recess.
Thank you.
The legislature's back in session. You should all have a copy now of the corrected amendment. Senator, you may proceed.
Seduce Mossi. Madam Speaker, my second amendment is on page three, lines one to five of the bill. And in sub-paragraph B, what I'm proposing essentially is to take out the word victim and substitute it to address filing claim in general. And the reason I'm doing this is so that the legislature doesn't unintentionally put the burden on the plaintiffs to show that they are victims of child abuse before being allowed to bring a claim. And so my amendment reads, "Any claim arising from an incident of child sexual abuse that occurred on Guam, which has been barred by virtue of the expiration of the previous civil statute of limitations, shall be permitted to be filed in any court of competent jurisdiction."
On the amendment? Would anyone like to speak on the amendment? There being none, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. On my list, I have the vice speaker. Senator, I mean. The senator is sure you can cover for me. Take a, what? Want to take a brief recess? Is he out in there? I'm, I'm going to speak.
Madam Speaker, you're, Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As an educator, and throughout my life, I've been surrounded by children and their families. And I'm very familiar and empathetic with the struggles that individuals feel certain, feel in certain points in their lives when they are not strong enough or somehow unable to come forward to report incidences. As a teacher and school principal, I've been informed of many cases of child sexual abuse and have made the proper referral to the police and child protective services. As a result of those, we've started many programs in our schools to try to bring some awareness to the schoolchildren, such as bad touch, good touch, feeling very uncomfortable about any of those touches, just say no, and report to an adult. And what we found is that when there are more awareness, of course, more and more of our students would come forward. And in all the years I've been an educator, of course, of all the years that I've been an administrator, one case seems to haunt me all the time. And without disclosing, of course, anything, and I really hope for the child's, you know, future, is that I had an eighth grader come to me to report a case only because she was afraid that her younger sisters would be next. And of course, the reports were made, the counselors were brought in, and, you know, the hard part, of course, for me to fathom, even though we have procedures in our government to help our children, was that when you follow procedures, of course, child protective services would want to make the placement always with a, a family. And it just so happens that based on the information I receive from the child and referred it to public health, I wanted more to be done, but I was told, of course, I couldn't do anything, that I've done my part in making the referral. But in that particular case, that's when I realized how sometimes it's, you know, kind of prevalent in our community, where this child was not only abused by her mother's partner, but the mother was abused by her father, and this child was the product of that incest, and the child was placed with the grandparents, and that's what I wanted to, for the government to, to act and, and go further than placing only in the homes. So, this, you know, has been very difficult, I know, for everybody, even for the victims themselves to come forward. And I, I really want to thank the victims for sharing because it is very difficult time to share, it's very painful, and research has shown that in five years, maybe, the children will start to speak up, but as we've seen here, it's actually taken more than that. It's taken them all the way into their adulthood and even late in their lives. So I thank them for, for their courage. I thank our community, our community for supporting and embracing these victims. But I would also like to share with parents just based on, you know, what I've seen in the schools and how we want to educate our people, and so that we can be more in tune with our children's behavior, when they sometimes seem kind of off. Sometimes we think maybe they're just misbehaving, and, you know, sometimes those are indication that there might be some sexual abuse. And it's not necessarily true for every single case, but there are just certain things that I think, for the most part, we should really be aware of, and that in particular, such things like recurring, maybe nightmares, eating habits would have changed, wetting the beds, mood swings, you know, frightened of certain things, hiding around their parents, hanging on to their legs, and when certain individual, you know, walks into, to the room, they have certain fears, maybe of certain places as well, are sworn to secrecy because naturally they were threatened, there'll be regression in behavior, and these are usually like the younger children who have a difficult time maybe explaining, you know, or revealing what has happened. But then I work primarily with middle schoolers, so that's a different set of behaviors as well with middle schoolers, and I've seen a lot of this in the schools, is that there's the act of cutting themselves, hurting themselves as a way to call out, changing, of course, in their eating habits and their diets and all that have changed. There's definitely unexplained mood changes, and sometimes you may think that, I remember a case in particular where a child came in dressed, and, in a way, of course, it's not appropriate, you know, in the school, and the mother not knowing what has happened basically kind of mistook that behavior and decided to take it beyond, you know, by putting makeup on, extreme makeup, lipstick, you know, big hoops and all those high heels, just to kind of snap her daughter out of it, not knowing, of course, what had happened to her child. And, you know, by looking into this, of course, we were able to identify exactly what has happened to the child. There's lots of anger involved, definitely, you know, and this is something we really need to look about, look into, rather. We've had really a very high, high cases of suicide in our island, and, you know, we need to find out too, because that definitely is an, one of the indicators. Depression definitely is a major, major, major thing. So, I, there's just some things, of course, that, you know, I'm telling parents, if you get in front of this and you start to see something different, then you can start talking. But I know that the best way to find out really is just disclosure, for the child to actually mention that they have been abused. But I think if we're upfront, right away, when we start to notice things, that more than likely you'll be able to find that there's always some underlying reason as to the misbehavior of our children or a change in, in behavior. And lastly, of course, is that I'd like to, to say that in 2011, I voted yes for the passage of Bill 34-31 relative to the statute of limitations for civil action involving child sexual abuse. Bill 34-31 was signed into law on March 9, 2011, and my support, my vote has not wavered, and I do stand also in support of Bill 3, what's the number of this bill? I forgot. 326, and I hope that my colleagues will, will follow and support this bill as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 326. But I also rise to defend this legislature. I really do think that it's imperative that the community understand that this is not, this is not the first time that this legislature has addressed this issue. Not this specific issue, but the protection of child sexual abuse victims. It should be, be very clear that Bill 326 only addresses civil actions. I just had someone who I thought who would understand the legislative process ask if that meant that the Archbishop would be prosecuted for this offense, for the offenses alleged. And I said, no, this bill only addresses the civil action. It only removes the statute of limitations for the civil action. This legislature, in Bill 33-31, five years ago, which became Public Law 31-6, removed the statute of limitations on criminal actions. So since March the 7th of 2011, there has been no statute of limitations on any prosecution, criminal prosecution for child sexual abuse that occurred after that date. Unfortunately, the Constitution, and this week being Constitution Week, we cannot ex post facto make a criminal statute that would go back to 1977 or 1976 to criminally prosecute. This bill is attempting to do that civilly, not criminally. Because I keep hearing comments that they think that this is going to result in criminal prosecution and the AG is going to do something about it. Cannot. This is for civil actions. And I want the public to understand that the 31st Legislature really addressed that many of these issues. 33-31, remove the statute of limitations for criminal prosecution. 33 dash, I mean, Public Law 31-6, seven, addressed this issue of opening a window for civil actions. 31-69 addressed the issue of removing the statute of limitations for any criminal sexual conduct, first and second degree felony, for even adults. And as to the education, Madam Speaker, probably the, the proudest, at least for me, proudest thing that, that we in the 31st Guam Legislature did was the passage of the Lonny-Kate Law for the education. If you speak to the Attorney General, and this last weekend, all the teachers were being brought in for training on how to be able to, to implement the Lonny-Kate curriculum in the schools so that kids know how to be able to address these, these issues. So I want the community to understand, we have been addressing it, and these emails that come to us asking, inferring that we don't care, I take offense to, because we have addressed it. We removed the criminal statute of limitation. And we have now implemented a curriculum so that in the schools, the, the kids are going to be trained to be able to, to speak up and speak out. And I have to rise at this time, Madam Speaker, to say I want to thank the author for acknowledging that in 31-7, that there was a provision in there that dissuaded counsel from bringing action for child sexual abuse. And I'm not afraid, I'm going to say it. The four pages that are being struck in this bill was sent down by the Chancery. I'll repeat that. The four pages were sent down by the Chancery, and we were told the bill would not pass if those sections didn't come in. And it would be vetoed. And it's very clear by the message by the Governor that he approved of those sections that were put in. So I want it understood, this legislature wanted to do the right thing the first time around, but it was pressure from the Chancery that had those four pages that are now being struck, that have all the lines through in this bill. We, as a legislature, have tried to address the protection of the children. And I'm hoping today we will finally do it by passing Bill 326, striking those sections that the Chancery insisted be part of our laws here. striking those sections that the Chancery insisted be part of our laws here to protect itself. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Spodan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. It was a little bit difficult for me, because with the legal training that I have, there is an underlying principle of why there exist statutes of limitation. And I think we've all kind of understand that one of the basic premises for the statute of limitation, the purposes of statute of limitations is to make sure that there is not an unfair burden placed upon a defendant because of stale claims, because there have been a loss of memory, there's loss or deterioration of evidence, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I've had to try to overcome the very purpose for the statute of limitations, to be able to reach on determining how I'd vote on this bill. I'm in favor of the concept, definitely. And really, I guess it comes down to just a couple of things in my mind. The principal purpose of really disfavoring a statute of just procedural rules. And so without that reason, Madam Speaker, and of course, in agreement with a lot of the other statements made by previous speakers, I wholeheartedly support this bill. That, thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Would anyone like to speak on the motion before I allow the author to close? Senator Blas, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for the discourse that we just had, the open and honest and frank discussion. Even during the recess, the concerns that were brought to make sure that we closed the gaps where we can close it. I think, and before I go on, I believe, I have a moral responsibility and obligation. The bill and the law that we had discussed in the previous 31st Guam Legislature by my good colleague, Frantiti. He recognized this many years ago. We were, he was working within the legal bounds that we, that we had, with the information that was brought at that point in time. I have to agree with him and I have to defend him. Because even in the drafting of this one, we took it, we, I went through and I poured through all the information that was available as a result of those discussions. So that we can come up with this bill. So I'm not going to take the credit for all of this. The credit is due as a result of the discussions that we all had as a body. And these were the discussions that we were having, not necessarily in public, because many of them were, quite honestly, in chance discussions that we had, we were meeting with each other. But also from the work that was done previously. And I have to defend and I have to acknowledge my good colleague, the Vice Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This was a long and arduous road. The task wasn't easy. There were many things to weigh in putting this together, this bill. But at the end of the day, what it came down to was again, this body's effort to make sure that a victim of sexual abuse, when, when they were children, that that person has the legal, the civil ability to make it right for them, for justice, for civil justice. Vice Speaker is right. Fortunately, because of our Constitution and the laws that we have to abide by, trust me, I would have allowed to lift the statute of limitations criminally for previous acts. But we can't. We can do it going forward, but not, we can't criminally. But we can do it civilly. And I want to give our victims that opportunity. There were many of my colleagues here that contributed to the bill that is before us, presented before us today. And I want to thank good Senator from Santa Rita for being able to proffer amendments that actually make it stronger. I want to thank you too, Madam Speaker, for not just the public discussion and the public presentation you provided, but throughout the months, the discussions that we had with regards to the need, the necessity to have this bill, to make sure that this bill provides these victims, these individuals, that opportunity to make themselves whole. And so, going back, Madam Speaker, this is our product. This is our body's way, message to the community, that we stand with and for the victims. And I want to further that by proffering, to add on as co-sponsors to the bill. First off, the chairman on the committee, who along with his staff worked diligently in being able to prepare this legislation, to help me preparing this legislation. I'd like to ask that we include as co-sponsors Senator Frank Hoggan Jr., Senator Roy Respecho, Madam Speaker, yourself, and I don't know if I'm talking out of turn, and I'd like to offer Senator Mary Torres. And Senator Nerissa Underwood.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
So with that, Madam Speaker, again, I want to thank my colleagues for the discussion, for the discourse. Again, please, I ask, I'm not going to take it for granted. I ask for full support of Bill 326-33. Let's send this message. Let's give our victims that opportunity to make their lives whole. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And with that, I ask that this bill be moved to the third reading.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered. Senator, are we going to?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker. Yeah, not with saying the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Yes.
For the purposes of, go ahead.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, given that there was just one very significant, two very significant amendments made to the bill, although something that the legal counsel and the clerk can take care of right away, I move that we proceed to the voting file and that we vote on this bill without engrossment.
Take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It looks like the legal counsel and the clerk is able to engross the bill. And so can we take a couple-minute recess? Because there is a strong desire by this body to vote on this bill today.
No objections, so ordered. No objections, so ordered. The legislature is back in session. The motion was to ask us to vote, so we are on the voting file just for Bill 326-33. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the title.
Bill Number 326-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., Frank B. Uggins Jr., R.J. Rispisho, Judith T. Wampat EDD, Mary Camacho Torres, N.B. Underwood, Ph.D. An Act to Add a New Section 11301.1, Repeal Subsections B and C of Section 11306, repeal Section 11306.1, all of Article 3, Chapter 11, Title VII, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Statute of Limitations in Cases Involving Child Sexual Abuse.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, excused. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 326-33 received 13 yea votes, no nay votes, and two excused absence. Bill Number 326-33 is duly passed by this body. We will recess until 2:30 this afternoon. The legislature is back in session. Thank you very much, Senators, for coming in this afternoon. We want to, um, recognize, Senator, because we left off, uh, in the voting file, and we need for you to take us back up again in the agenda.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions for the Vice Speaker to make a motion on, on that matter.
On that motion, no objection. So ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker. After much discussion with, um, the Chairman of the Committee of Oversight over this bill, and with discussions from some of my other colleagues, um, I move that, uh, Bill 312 revert back to committee for one month. Um, I've been assured by the Chairman that he will conduct some oversight hearings to address an issue that was raised at the public hearing, uh, at the public hearing on the bill, and that was on tip and that how the businesses address the issue. Um, I've also had numerous people come to my office after the hearing in this last weekend, discuss with me the issue that the tip ha- have, has not been addressed, and so I am willing to, um, move that the bill go back to committee for a month to have roundtable hearings, and then, um, I will make a motion to try to get it back on next month's agenda. Um, but I want one thing very clear, that I am, I'm not thinking, uh, gonna wait until a report is due that may never come. Um, I'm willing to have public discussions and roundtables to address improving the bill, but not to wait for Godot. Thank you.
On the motion, and apparently this is a very, uh, specific motion that you're, you're moving, then with several other, um, uh, caveats to it, that wanted to be reverted back to committee, that's the main thing, but I know you specifically indicated a time certain for thirty days for one month, you said? Uh, okay. And that the, you're committing the chairperson as well to have a series of, uh, work sessions or hearings.
On the motion?
On the motion, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, that's absolutely correct, and I rise to thank the Vice Speaker for making that motion to have that bill revert back to my Committee of Oversight over Labor issues. When we first had a public hearing on the bill, the, um, the public hearing focus was really on, on the desire to wait for the study, and it didn't take until recent that the Attorney General, uh, released the RFP for the study, and there's a ninety-day, uh, timeline, and so what the Speaker, what the Vice Speaker is asking us to do is to make it perfectly clear, and for the legislative record, that he intends to push this issue, uh, whether or not that study is completed. And I think, to be fair to all those who are concerned with this issue, whether they support it or not, I think, to be fair, the Vice Speaker, I support his motion to, to recognize that the most prudent thing to do is to go back and have a series of, uh, roundtable hearings, uh, to meet with, uh, not only the stakeholders, but the minimum wage earners, uh, to recognize what, um, this bill would do, and so that when you call us into session for the October session, I will certainly, uh, not only have a committee report ready, but I will be there right alongside the Vice Speaker to champion that this bill be on the agenda for all of us to be able to deliberate on. But the focus, um, on that issue as well is the tip wages and how restaurant owners have applied the new, um, when the minimum wage was increased by a dollar, they're not supposed to use the service charge to offset the, the minimum wage, uh, increase or any of their salary thereof, and so those are the issues that we're working, uh, closely with not only the Chamber of Commerce, but also the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association to advise its members that, based on the Department of Labor ruling, they can no longer use that service charge to supplement that, that waitstaff's, um, minimum wage salary. And so I, I rise in support of the Vice Speaker's motion to have this bill returned back to the Committee of Labor, and over the next thirty days or so, this is what we're gonna do, and, and, and the bill, uh, in whatever form it takes, will be ready, uh, for presentation at the October session.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, does anyone else like to speak? There being none, so no objection to the motion. So ordered.
Madam Speaker, the...
Yes.
There still will be some override attempts, and until such time, those sponsors indicate to you that they're, they're ready. I believe I'm ready to make a motion to proceed to the second reading file.
Hearing objections, so ordered. Thank you. First bill in the second reading file, Senator Rodriguez on Bill 297-33.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon. I'd like to move Bill 297-33 to the third reading, and be allowed to briefly explain what this bill's about.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, uh, Bill 297, um, is, um, really was introduced under que- requests of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, um, more specifically from the Bureau of Family, Health, and Nursing Services. Uh, this Bureau, Madam Speaker, runs the Family Planning Program. Um, this Family Planning Program is a hundred percent federally funded. Um, and one of the terms and requirements of the, of the grant, Madam Speaker, is that, uh, the department must, um, um, take every effort to establish a, um, a fee schedule and be able to charge for services from, from those who are able to, um, make payments, such as third-party payers, and even with the community, um, health centers, and, and so, I'm sorry, and even with the public programs, the MIP and Medicaid programs. And so what this does, Madam Speaker, is, um, is, um, ha- have them pursue the fee schedule, but in, on the interim, have them adopt the fee schedule that has been promulgated and established by the community health centers, um, by the regional community health centers, both, um, the north and the south. Um, and by, by doing that, this would now, um, comply with the requirements of the grant, and, um, as, as the intent, findings and intent had mentioned here, uh, the grant really is in jeopardy. There was a, a date of June 2016 that this had to be, um, had to be established and pursued. Um, however, uh, with discussions with the federal counterparts of public health, uh, the introduction of this bill, and them explaining how it's taking a little bit of time to move this forward, um, they've understood, and, um, but now it's really important for us to be able to move this forward and pass this, uh, bill at this time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anyone like to speak on the motion? There being none, so on the motion to send 297 to the third reading file without any objection. So ordered. I'd like to move on to the next bill, but I'm unable, uh, without the author being here, so we're gonna take, uh, a recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator, we're going to, um, recess until tomorrow at three. at three.